We'll call the meeting to order. A roll call?
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson. Christensen.
Here.
Amen.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Dacken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Would you all please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the principle of the word which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Are there any additions or additions to the agenda? Hearing now, we'll move into the consent items. Is there -- are there any consent items that need to be pulled or that we need to look at?
I move to approve them as presented by Mr. Mayor.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items as written. Is there any discussion? All those in paper say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll move into the Green Step Cities update. Andy, you want to talk to us about that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I had a great opportunity last week to go to the League of Minnesota Cities and receive our Step Two Award. What this award represents is last year, the city of Wilmer decided to try out the volunteer Minnesota Green Step Cities program. And at that point, we were a Step One city. And to get to the next level, we had to achieve eight of the 24 best practices. And at that time also, the city council put together a task force that I'm a part of. And we went through documenting the achievements that the city of Wilmer already had done. And we were optimistic that we would, within a year's time, we'd get eight of them done. But what we actually found out is the city of Wilmer is much more progressive than that. And we were able to get 12 of the best practices done, which was outstanding. It was fun to kind of take a look at the city of Wilmer and go through the list of best practices and just really learn more about the community. And so what I'd like to do today is just kind of go down the list of the best practices and action steps that were achieved, that has previously been achieved by the city of Wilmer, but they're now documented and ultimately allowed us to get the Step Two recognition.
Please do.
So, under the category of building and lighting, some of the action steps that we looked at were all-new street lighting will be dark sky compliant, and traffic signals are going to be more energy efficient. And so this doesn't mean we have to switch anything out. It means when new streets are being laid out or the equipment is -- needs to be replaced, that's the time that we change it out. And so the utilities policy is that it's going to be upgraded to LED fixtures and dark sky compliant fixtures. And that's the same with the traffic signals as well as lighting. I don't believe that all lighting is scheduled to be LED, but they're trying some of that out right now. The benefits of the LED is it -- the literature says that it's about half the power needed to run an LED light fixture versus a standard light fixture. And the maintenance on them, they're supposed to be relatively maintenance-free for many, many more years. You know, those in the construction industry probably understand that better than most of us. So there really is a long-term energy savings and maintenance benefit to following that policy. In the building reuse categories, we have language in our comprehensive plan that talks about historic preservation of buildings. And we've only got a one-star action step here, and there's up to a three-star. If we put some specific historic preservation ordinances together, we could probably get a better rating, but it's not necessary to complete the requirements for the action step. It just gives us another star behind our name. So it's just something to think about. There is a Minnesota Main Street model already in place for the city of Wilmer, and so we did get the three-star for that action step. Under comprehensive plan and implementation for land use, the city of Wilmer does have a comprehensive plan. It does allow for mixed use in the downtown area and as a central business district, and those are all things that a healthy city has. Under transportation, mobility options, we have a biking and trail system and a guidance ordinance. And promoting biking and walking transit is part of the best practices. There's active living campaigns, and this last year, Safe Routes to School was adopted, and so we're looking into that, and that also gave us a star. And then other mobility options, just promoting things like the cat bus is something on the website, and so we got a star for promoting that as well. Just, we're trying to make cities more walkable, less automotive-intensive. You know, we still need cars, but we want to promote all kinds of ways to get to places. Under environmental management, the city of Wilmer is a U.S. tree city, so we got a star for that. There is a landscaping ordinance for the city of Wilmer. Anytime there's a large parking lot being developed, it's considered how to landscape that. If there's residential areas nearby, there needs to be some kind of buffer zone. And even within the parking lot in a general business district, if it's large enough, there needs to be a certain amount of planting involved in that, and that's typically reviewed by the Planning Commission. Stormwater management, we know that the city of Wilmer has stormwater issues, and there is an ordinance in place that any new construction has to maintain or take care of its own stormwater runoff. And that stormwater quantity runoff, it's trying to slow it down as it gets into the system versus stormwater quality, which is trying to purify the water before it gets into the system. Under parks and trails, we do again have a plan for our pedestrian plans and biking plans that identify gaps within the system, so we get a star for that. We have, it says, achieve minimum levels of green space. And what was really fun was to look at the population of Wilmer and all the parks, and then do a quick calculation to find out what percentage we're at. And we achieved two stars because we have a very good parks-to-population percentage for the city of Wilmer. So that's one thing really to kind of tote our hat about. And then, another thing with parks and trails is that they want the community to be involved with maintaining parks. And I know the United Way has a Day of Caring each year, and because they do that, and they go around and they clean up the parks, and they clean up other spaces and such. And so we do get a star for that action as well. And then, under benchmarks and community engagement, just coming out to the city council meetings or some of the other meetings as well, talking about Green Steps and talking about what the goals are for the city gives us a star. And since we do that on an annual basis, it doesn't have to be the Green Steps goals, but it's just goals for the city in general, we get stars for those actions. Green businesses, green tourism, the Chamber on their website promotes connections to the lakes and the rivers and to Sibley Park and all that through the city of Wilmer. And so we're promoting just this use of the environment and coming here to Wilmer as a destination to enjoy the stuff. So that was a one-star action. We have an excellent buy-local campaign. We got a three-star action for the Chamber's buy-local campaign, and that's, it's important to, I guess, support that because not only are you supporting local business, but those local businesses then turn around and support the city as well. Renewable energy, we do have a wind energy ordinance for the city of Wilmer, and it's a one-star action. But we did get a three-star action for our wind turbines that we do have. So that's another thing that's kind of exciting to promote for the city of Wilmer. And under local foods, we got a one-star action because we have several farmers' markets in the area. And also, if the community-owned grocery store takes off, that will benefit this as well. And so those are the 12 best practices, and there are 25 action steps within those that we achieved. And we're just down to four action steps, our four best practices left to get the final Step Three recognition. And those, I think, are still policy decisions to be made. And looking at those, the first thing that we need to do is enter the amount of energy, electricity, and gas for public buildings into the state's B3 system. And what that does is it takes a look at the city buildings and then compares them to all the city buildings in the state and lets you know at a baseline where you're at. Are we using more energy than other towns, or are we about the same, or are we superiorly using less energy? And once we know that, you just have a baseline to make some decisions, say, you know, do we need to insulate our buildings, or we need to make them tighter, or are they fine the way they are? And to do that, we can actually get a free intern, I believe, that could do that as well. And I gave some of that information to the city a while back, and we'll see how that's Another best practice that they want to see is a complete Green Steps, a Green Streets policy. Now, that doesn't mean that every street has to fall under that category. It's just to identify the streets that should be for automobile traffic, biking, pedestrian, have a certain number of trees. It doesn't mean that all of them have to, but there should be some identified at least that are desirable for those routes of travel. Purchasing is part of it as well. What they really want is to reduce the amount of paper used by cities. And then, because of that savings of a reduction of paper, they would like you to purchase recycled content paper. And one of the thoughts is to do some paperless meetings, maybe not at the council level to start with, but maybe something like the Planning Commission or something like that could work on paperless meetings. I know there's cities like the city of Marshall or the city of Benson, they're all working on paperless systems. And if it's not paperless, then it's just policies to reduce the amount of paper. And there are probably simple things like printing both sides of your paper, you know, make sure all the computers are set that way. And then a recycling policy. And I imagine that the city already has some recycling policies set, but they're looking for some kind of written policy. It doesn't have to be something that the city council takes action on, but they're looking for some kind of formal policy on recycling. And so, you know, we're getting to the end of this. We're about as far as I can take it without talking to staff or the council at some level to draft some kind of policies. I think I can start some of these policies and bring them to the Planning Commission, and then the debate can take place there on what's important and what's not. But, yeah, we're almost to the end of this already, and I think it has a lot to do with just being diligent about having meetings, looking at this. We did put a lot of volunteer hours into it. You've worked with consultants in the past, and you know how expensive consultants can be. And we've been a volunteer group and put that same amount of hours in. So it's been a good payoff, though. We really enjoyed looking at the city of Wilmer, discovering new things, and showing that, you know, we're a leader when it comes to sustainability and energy conservation and livable communities. Is there any questions at this time? Do you want to hear more about just the League of Minnesota Cities awards, or?
Are there any questions from the council? Yeah, Councilman DeBleek?
Yeah, Andy, you mentioned the LED streetlights. How about streetlights in private parking lots or off-premise lighting?
Private light?
Effort to, we could get those converted to LED? Because I know the high-pressure sodium are not really that inefficient. They're not as efficient as an LED, but they're not as...
There is credits.
And then you also mentioned dark skies. Do you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure. Question one is on private LED lighting and private construction in general. There are best practices and credits for that as well. We didn't pursue those because it was more difficult to go to individual community members to try and tell them that they should do this. You know, it's all about freedom there, too. And so we looked at what the public sector does. But if a private industry does want to put in LED and for their own causes of saving money and energy, we can record that best practice as well. And then the second question was dark sky compliant. What is that? And that's, it's basically trying to eliminate what's called light pollution as much as possible. We don't want light projecting up into the night sky, and we don't want light to cross really further than what you're supposed to be illuminating. And to be honest, I think most lighting projects now all have, like, dark sky compliant fixtures. It might be some of the older fixtures that don't do that, but that's kind of a big deal for the state of Minnesota, and so most projects do follow that. And part of the reason that they talk about that is, one, is you don't want to anger your neighbors by casting light into their windows. That's pretty obvious. But then the feel-good things of, there's studies that, you know, bats and birds and things are starting to, some of their migratory patterns or nocturnal patterns are getting changed because of light going straight up in the air.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Andy. You had mentioned there's five steps left, and I was writing them down, and I missed a couple. There was energy, streets, paths, and the combination of trees, recycling, and what were the other two?
There's four best practices left. And the first one is to track the energy of the existing buildings. The second one, we'll say, is purchasing, doing a energy start purchasing. The third one is a recycling policy. And then the fourth one is the complete streets.
And the complete streets were, had involved the streets, the paths, and then a combination of trees?
Right. It's just to designate certain streets that are made for pedestrian, automobiles, and bicycle trails. I think even the project, if it goes through the first street bridge to Robins Island project, is going to be making that street, you know, the Business 71, we're making the bike trail there and the walking trail there more accessible. There's also some plantings, indoor plantings there to improve stormwater quality. I believe there's some lighting, some pedestrian lighting there as well in that project. And so that really would qualify as part of that, as long as we can get the ordinance passed as well. I think Don Winkler has already written a complete streets ordinance, but it just needs to go through the proper channels to get reviewed and approved.
Okay. And then, is there any cost to the city for going through Green Steps?
There hasn't been any cost to the city, and again, mainly because we've been a volunteer group. We've only briefly talked with the staff members because we're basically looking at the things that the city has already done. But now that we get into the policy portion of it, which really is these four last steps, we'll need to spend some time with the Planning Commission and with council members just to go through the, what these ordinance need to be.
Okay. Thank you again for your presentation. Thank you, Andy.
Good. And then I'd like to give this to the mayor and the city of Wilmer as their award to being a Step Two city. And we hope to get to Step Three pretty soon.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor Yanis.
Can I impose?
Yeah.
Perfect photo for Buster. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Aldridge, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to say, a comment to say thank you to Andy. And if you're interested out on the state website, there's Minnesota Green Step Cities. It's very interesting to see all the documentations that's out there about the city of Wilmer and all the things that you've done. And so I encourage you to keep going with it, and I think it's very good for the city of Wilmer. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, what I thought was interesting, too, is there's 52 cities in this program right now, and there's a lot of cities at the League of Minnesota Cities Awards banquet that were really interested about this, and they saw that we were a Step Two city, and so I think they're a little excited to see what we're doing and want to figure out what this is as well, so.
Oh, good.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you. With that, we will move into consideration of the resolution, accepting an offer on the sale of $1,950,000 worth of general obligation bonds. Kathy, would you like to explain that to us, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Well, a lot has happened since I was up here last, and we talked about the sale. We do go, each time you go into the market, we do go out and get a credit rating from a nationally-recognized rating agency. The agency that the city has been using is Moody's Investors Service. This time, we had some reservations going into the call, and unfortunately, Moody's did downgrade the city a half a notch. You had been a AA II, and you are now a AA III. I would like to share some of the comments, though, because the rating from the conversations that I had with the analyst is more a reflection of the negative outlook that Moody's has formally placed on the health care industry than a reflection of anything that the city has done or not done. They comment on the strong financial management of the city. They comment on the stable operations of the hospital. But because it is a city hospital, because it is a significant-sized hospital within the context of the city's overall budget, the negative outlook that they have on the health care sector was overriding, and they did make the downgrade. So buried in there is the good news, that you're doing the right things. They're very supportive of the general fund balance that you keep, the way in which the city has conservatively managed it. Finances is directly in the report, but they did feel necessary to downgrade the city at this time. We never like to carry that news. There have been, and this is pretty unprecedented in my career, there were 13 downgrades of Minnesota Cities last year in 2012. There have been 18 so far this year to date. So that's in the state of Minnesota. So it's not an uncommon occurrence. In many cases, I don't completely understand it, and yours was one case, but that's where we are. The impact on you of that downgrade is about a 5 to 10 basis point change in the rate that you would get, so .05 or .1 percent. And that's one of the reasons that we go for a bond rating, is to improve the marketability of your bonds. Being in the AA category, you're still in one of the two highest categories of rating, AAA being the highest. And so there is a moderate impact on the rates that you received. The good news is, going out into the marketplace, it is a holiday week, but we're early in the week, and there were, the last time I checked, there were a total of five sales nationwide. So the city did get four bids on their transaction today. The yellow sheet that's in front of you is a recap of the bids received. The low bid was from UMB Bank, that's out of Missouri, at a 2.2526 percent, and then they range up to a 2.50 percent change. If you'll notice on that yellow sheet, the price there, $1,996, is in excess of the size of the bonds, $1,950. And so we were able to use that extra money to reduce the size of the transaction. So after the bids were received, we were able to resize the transaction and reduce it to $1,910,000, and that's recapped at the bottom of the yellow sheet. So with that, I would stand for any questions that you've got. Our recommendation would be that you award the bonds to UMB Bank.
Councilman Christensen? Thank you. Thank you for your report on the bonds. You mentioned the downgrade due to the health care industry. Is it strictly because of our hospitals that we own, and could we expect more, another downgrade?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, the rating agency will never say that it's strictly because of one factor or another factor. That was a serious concern of the credit committee. It took me off-guard a little bit. As you know, the hospital operations to date this year have not been what we would have hoped them to be. They did perform better in May, but they, really, in looking at the operation of the hospital, they indicated that it was stable, that it's been paying its own way year after year, which we know. So it is really just the health care industry generally and the downward pressure on this medical reimbursements. And your hospital, like hospitals everywhere, they're all caught in the same net. Whether to expect further downgrades, I think that that would be dependent on how the hospital manages its affairs. And again, within the context of the rating report, their comment was that the hospital is operating stably and has been in the past. So something would need to change there.
If the city didn't own the hospital, I mean, are they an asset to us, or presently it appears that they're not because of the downgraded bond rating? If we didn't own a hospital, would it still be at the 3A or the higher rating?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Christensen, you know, the hospital being, whether it's an, in this case, the focus is on the hospital, but the, in terms of the downgrade. But if you think generally, for Wilmer and for the region, the hospital is quite an asset for you to have. And again, it's a stable performer. They've done well for you. So I think that I would probably focus on that as opposed to the moment's downgrade. And I know that that's disappointing news for you to have that occur, but it is something that's out of your control and out of the hospital's control.
In our resolution, are we to reduce it to 1,910, then, instead of the 1,950 that's on there?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, there may have been a change since the one that you received. The one I have in my hand does state $1,910.
Okay, ours says 1,950. With that, I'll move the resolution, accepting the offer on the sale of $1,910,000 General Obligation Improvement Bond Series 2013A, providing for the issuance and levying a tax for the payment thereof.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to accept the resolution, or to make a resolution, accepting the offer on the sale of $1,910,000 General Obligation Improvement Bond Series 2013A, providing for their issuance and levying a tax for the payment thereof. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. At this time, we will, is there anyone to speak at the open forum?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll move into the Public Works Safety Committee report for June 25, 2013. And that would be, who's got that public? That would be you.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did meet on the 25th of June, Public Works Public Safety Committee meeting. Item number one on our agenda was to accept a bid and award the contract for Wilmer Avenue Southwest improvements. Bids were opened on June 18, 2013, for the improvements to Wilmer Avenue between Southwest 22nd Street and County State Aid Highway 5. The project includes a new railroad quiet zone crossing, and one bid was received from Dunick Incorporated, and their bid was $1,68,195.47, which is about 11 percent above the engineer's estimate. It appears that unit prices received for aggregate base, Batuminus, and Stormsour have increased anywhere from 10 to 20 percent since the bids were received earlier this year. Funding sources for the project include state aid funds from both the city and Canoyai County and the local option sales tax. It was a recommendation of Jared Vogel, our city engineer, to award the bid to Dunick. After some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed, and I will introduce the resolution to accept the bid of Dunick, Inc., in the amount of $1,68,195.45. I authorize our mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the bid of Dunick Incorporated in the amount of $1,68,195.47, and I authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Item number two had to do with another bid and award contract for Fourth Avenue Southwest improvements. Again, on June 18, the city opened bids for improvements to Fourth Avenue Southwest in Industrial Park. As requested by city council, the project includes a base bid and alternate bids for concrete and batuminous surfacing. The low bidder out of the four bids was Keakley Underground of Kimball, Minnesota, at a base bid plus alternate A, which is concrete, and that bid came to $513,618.2. Alternate B, which is batuminous overlay, was $491,395.92. These bids were below the engineer's estimate and the lifecycle cost, based on the unit prices received, is approximately equal for concrete and batuminous pavement. Mr. Vogt stated that this street is a good location for concrete paving. Again, after some discussion, a motion was made, seconded and passed for the following, and I will introduce the resolution to accept the base bid and use alternate A from Keakley Underground in the amount of $513,618.2 and then authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the base bid and alternate A from Keakley Underground in the amount of $513,618.2 and authorize the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Third item on our agenda had to do with the information on the sump pump inspection that was executed by Bolton &amp; Mink. In June of 2011, a contract was executed with Bolton &amp; Mink to perform sump pump inspections in two different areas of the city, that being Orton Blad Edition and the Country Club Drive. Brian Glinky, who was the project manager for the sump pump inspection program, was before the committee to give us a final report. Total of 581 units were inspected. The inspections resulted in 70 new winter discharge permits at $50 a year, therefore increasing our revenue by $3,500. Mr. Glinky also stated that he reviewed the city's current ordinance and it was found to be up to date with recent law. The $10 per month charge for winter discharge permit was found to be an adequate amount to cover the costs of treating the water, as discharge is much less during these months. The final report was received for information only. Item number four is a downtown gateways presentation, and instead of me reading the minutes, I would call upon Mr. Adam Arvidson, who presented it to our committee, and he can tell us what's going on at the gateways.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. It's a pleasure to speak before you again today. You're, probably most of you somewhat aware of the gateways project that's been going on now for about eight months. This was one of the elements identified in the downtown plan that was accepted last year. And the basic idea behind this project is to look at three different locations on the fringes of downtown and to consider how to create a gateway, a designed element, that would welcome people to downtown and sort of stimulate interest in downtown, both for residents and tourists, but also to give it sort of an identity and a vitality to continue many of the efforts that have been happening to, again, increase downtown's vitality overall. So what I'd like to do today is present to you what we consider to be the final concept designs for the gateways. And by concept designs, I must stress that these aren't necessarily exactly what would be built one day. Certainly, there's another whole process of design development and construction plans that needs to happen at some point in the future to be determined, but this was an important step to sort of get the community working together and get everyone on board with what that general idea might look like. This project was funded jointly by the city and also by Main Street, Minnesota, through dollars that come in from the Land and Legacy Amendment. So these are some of those tax dollars cycling through the city and then right back through the state and right back here to the city, to us, for our benefit. So the project began with me sort of thinking about how gateways in Wilmer might be different than elsewhere. In many cases, when you think about a downtown gateway, you have a lot of land to work with and you might sort of create a design that is from scratch and has to do with just that one location. Our three locations, which are First Street in Litchfield and Third Street and Highway 12, and then the west end of town, either at Highway 12 and 7th Street or Highway 12 and Benson, are all very different and also have severe right-of-way constraints. There's basically not a lot of land at any of them. So the main difference that I did was to try to think of these instead of as totally comprehensive design, from-the-ground gateways, I instead started to think of what are the different components that could make a gateway? And if you sort of pasted those on, as it were, in these different places and used them differently, but used the same things, you could create an identity and still address the particular constraints of the land. So those six elements are to think about a fence or rail, so a horizontal element, a vertical element or a column. This is obviously the big attention getter. And then the third thing would be a pavement change. So as you enter into downtown, perhaps there's a different surfacing on the pavement to sort of create that threshold. Then the other three are a little less kind of sexy, but also have to do entirely with how people perceive this gateway as you're entering. And one would be possibly some curb changes, revisions of that, reduction in sign clutter, and then lastly, perhaps the incorporation of some murals on blank buildings where they're visible. So what I've done is created some graphics for each of those in Plan View that sort of show how these could be kind of set upon these different locations. This was some of the earlier work that was done, that was then presented about two months ago in a series of public meetings and committee meetings. We met with the Planning Commission also to bring that out to the public. So this is the gateway at First Street in Litchfield Avenue, and I know north is normally supposed to be up, but this one fits on the paper the best, the other way better. So the First Street Bridge is actually heading off to your left and downtown is to the bottom of the screen as you follow Litchfield Avenue. So the main idea behind this one is to actually create a full median in First Street between Becker Avenue and Litchfield Avenue. This would streamline some of the traffic movements that are happening there with the current central turn lane, but also allows the opportunity to create this horizontal element. You can see the blue lines are this horizontal element, the fence or rail, in the middle of the median, which is a prominent visual cue. There would also be some additional curb renovations by Rule Tire, not closing off their access entirely, but closing some of the extra accesses very near the corner. And then also some more railing there and also on the Heritage Plaza block. What you can see there on the Heritage Plaza block near First Street is a possible route for the future Glacier Lake State Trail. I've been working with those owners and this is a general consensus concept at this point, which is incorporated into this drawing. A vertical element at the corner of Youth for Christ and a pavement change on Litch as you enter. A few other minor things, there's some sign clutter, actually along Litchfield, as soon as you turn that corner, there's a big huge sign that sort of blocks the view of downtown but tells you that downtown is straight ahead. So we clean some of that up, I think, and rely more on the visual cues and the views of downtown to create that gateway. Moving on to the Third Street gateway option, this one is now oriented so north is up. This is perhaps the simplest of the three gateway locations, and the main idea here is to actually cinch in or narrow Third Street in that first block off of Highway 12 and create a wide boulevard, so essentially eliminating the parking on that block and create a wide boulevard with a rail in that boulevard, an additional rails flanking Highway 12, and then a vertical element on the corner where the county has a green space kind of on the edge of the parking lot. Also a pavement change across Third as you go in there, and then actually relocation of a, one of the traffic signals from the, sort of as you look at this drawing, the left side of Third or the west side of Third over to the east to open up that view of the monument as you come through. I should note with regard to this drawing that during the course of the process, I've met with some Mindot staff several times in their planning department to just sort of get a sense of what really might be acceptable in the context of the state highway that runs right through there. And so some of the decisions that you're seeing here, essentially limiting the pavement change to the roads that come into downtown rather than trying to do an entire intersection, some things like that are driven by some Mindot concerns that seem to be kind of hard sells over there. I'll move on to the third one. In this one, I'm still hedging our bets a little bit, and so I'm going to offer it to you both ways. There's two possible gateways into downtown from this direction, turning right on 7th Street and then left on Becker, or using the sort of slip-off ramp onto Benson, which has the advantage of that you get a great view of downtown before you have to turn downtown, but it has the disadvantage of being a pretty fast-moving street and it's hard to make that turn sometimes. However, that's one of the more simple gateways as far as doing the elements. So you can see a long kind of rail there flanking Highway 12 and then a vertical element on the corner of the city-owned parking lot. Possible murals on the sides of some buildings that are sitting right there would really make that a prominent gateway. In the other direction, you'd have sort of a, almost a dashed line of these fences or railings following 7th Street and then along Becker, and you'd actually put a vertical element sort of further down. You can see the number two on there, right on the front of the city parking lot, to sort of draw people, draw that eye over to the right. The advantage of this one here is that Mindot will be putting in a right turn lane on Highway 12 for 7th Street, so it actually will help to funnel traffic and make that right-hand go there, go that way. And it also allows us the opportunity, if they're working with curbs anyways, to begin to piggyback on that a little bit potentially. And that has come up in some of the discussions I've had. So during the public presentations, about halfway through the process, I came up with three different ideas for how this all might look. So those three graphics were sort of how they function in the landscape, but how might they look? And so I presented three general ideas that were drawn from the essential character of Wilmer, as I've come to understand it over the years of working here. The first one is the idea of the glacial lakes, and this one presented essentially a tall, simple vertical element, kind of blue, iridescent in a way to symbolize kind of the lakes and the water, and then also a series of boulders and acrylic glowing ice blocks in the medians and in the parkways. So essentially, what people felt about this one overall, and we presented to the Public Works Committee and at Planning Commission, we also presented in a public forum. We had about 20 people there that came and commented on the drawings. And the boards were also up around town for a few weeks after we had that battery of public meetings. And the general consensus was that this really had a wonderful, simple form that resonated with people a whole lot. However, the rocks and ice blocks were a little bit strange to people and maybe not exactly the right image for Wilmer. There were some maintenance concerns and some aesthetic concerns, and I sort of chuckle when I say that because this is what makes my job a little bit fun, is you brainstorm a bit and then you put it out there without it being final, and you invite the public and you invite your elected and appointed officials to take a look at it, and you get some fun comments back, which drive the design. And I think that's part of the process. And as we go through this, you'll see that the final design really addresses a lot of these things here. The second idea was called Where the Forest Meets the Prairie. Wilmer sits at an interesting place kind of ecologically in the world, and so we had these metal abstracted forms of vegetation, trees for the vertical element and little prairie posts for the horizontal rail. And the comment on this one was essentially that this tree system was way too busy, especially considering the background for most of these, that it would probably get lost in the background landscape, and that these were too busy and also probably dangerous. And in general, this comment was, did not really resonate at all with the various groups that we spoke to, despite my active model that I actually created about it, but again, that's okay, that's why we do the public involvement. The last one really drew on Wilmer's railroad heritage. It seemed to me that this was an automatic theme from the very beginning, but it was hard to think of a way to make the railroad kind of look beautiful in a way that would be welcoming and interesting to bring people into downtown. So this one actually created a rail, it was a little bit more classically what you'd think of as a rail. This would be a custom railing, but it draws from the geometry of the switching yards, which actually can be very interesting as you see from the photos there. We also had a vertical element which drew from the idea of that too. And essentially, the sentiment on this was that this railing really worked for people. We had almost universal acceptance of this particular railing. However, the column started to seem a little bit ominous and dark perhaps, and also maybe a little bit busy again for the background that it would be playing against. So what we heard here was that the railroad theme was really good because that is, you know, you know, Wilmer is named for a railroad person and it grew up around the railroad and we still have active railway there. But how do you sort of soften that and make it not just about that we're a railroad town? And so someone actually suggested, any chance that we can bring in that whole lakes idea, the glacial lakes too? And somebody wrote on one of these, can we do the rocks and the rails? So then my challenge as a designer was to go back and say, okay, if we're going to combine a couple of these themes and try to bring them together, how do you do that without making a whole hodgepodge? How do you make sure that it all does still hang together? And so what I did was I stuck with this railing, and then I went back to the column that people really enjoyed, that was very simple and bright and notable, and tried to combine those two in a way that would be interesting. So what I'm going to show you now is a few drawings of before images and then what that might look like afterwards. And essentially, what you're going to see here pop up when I advance this is you're going to start to see some of these elements get tacked onto the landscape at the intersection of First Street and Litchfield Avenue. And so here you can see, there's a vertical element here, which obviously gains a lot of prominence in, within its background because of that simplicity, which was one thing that really resonated with people. And you can see the railing coming here on the right-hand side to protect that pedestrian way and also create a bit of that visual character. And I've actually added some blue to the railing also to brighten it up a little bit and also have it match a bit more with the vertical element. On the far side of the drawing, it's a little bit dark in this picture, but you can see the rail against the Heritage Bank Plaza with the future Glacier Lake State Trail in the foreground. At Third Street, what this would look like is this. You have, again, this prominent vertical element on the corner with the railings, with their little blue inserts, both following Highway 12 and also a nice planted boulevards heading in to downtown along Third Street. And you can see here a bit of the pavement change too, which would highlight that sort of rolling out the carpet as you enter town. For 7th Street, I've illustrated just the 7th Street option rather than also the Benson option. And so this is the view now, obviously Peterson Funeral Home is on the right-hand side, and what you'll see here is we're going to start to see that railing kind of show up in that kind of dashed arrangement around the corner and the vertical element, but we're also going to see the right turn lane materialize here, and you can see what that looks like in reality when that'll be built. So again, here we have a railing along the edge, possibly some simple kind of native grasses down below, low maintenance, and here the blue becomes real prominent with the vertical element there also. And so now I'm going to show sort of all three, despite the fact that these are in very different arrangements, depending on how the roadways fit, how the visibility needs to be, where you're trying to direct people. Again, very different arrangements, but by using the same vertical element, the same horizontal element, and some of the same pavement changes and curb changes, we can create an identity that really holds true across downtown Wilmer while also addressing the very particular characters of each of those different gateway locations. And again, what I think the result of it is, is that it's more of an intervention of elements into the landscape rather than a wholesale transformation of these intersections, which would be problematic for a variety of reasons, namely the fact that two of these sit on state highways. But also, this does sort of give you the sense of the context of downtown without sort of going over the top of that. It gives you maybe more of a wayfinding in rather than a replacement of the view of downtown that you might otherwise get. So I'm going to leave these images up for discussion purposes and I'll open for questions. If anybody has any for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Steve?
Amen. Amen to work. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks again for your presentation, being here again tonight after the Public Works meeting, but as far as the cost, and I was just looking at these pictures, brainstorming, and as far as lighting, is that something that would be considered in those Wilmer signs?
Yeah, I think we would consider lighting, and exactly how to do that becomes a bit more of a detailed design question, but I think in general, the vision would be that certainly that column would want to be lit somehow. In my mind's eye, conceptually, I think of it sort of glowing a bit rather than shooting up some, you know, big spotlight into the sky. You know, it could sort of glow to create that entry. There's a possibility there could be some lighting on the fence too. They're not, fences like that aren't often lit, but it's something that you could think about doing. But I think at the very minimum, the vertical element would want to have some kind of glow, and that may very well be enough because that is, in a way, sort of the beacon.
Any further questions? Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the fence, does that go all the way down to the ground, or is there an opening so a lawn mower can get underneath or weed whacker?
In most cases, in a fence like this, you would plant it in a surface that doesn't need to be mown. So in this case, I'm showing, as you can see on the bottom one, it would be more of a native grass, like a dwarf little blue stem or a june grass. So that would be a little bit just more kind of floral in a way, and you wouldn't actually mow that right up against the fence. The other option is to do it in more of a gravel mulch or something like that. But it's, whether it goes down to the ground or not, it's notoriously difficult, as you are probably suggesting, to mow around a fence. And so I tend to like to not have to, and instead put something there that you don't have to maintain aggressively.
Any further comments or questions? Councilman DeBlick?
Yeah, Adam. You said these are just preliminary designs, right?
Yeah, these are concept designs, which would be developed further in a detailed design process. Not unlike, if we think about firstly, kind of how a roadway might get laid out, and then later you do all the detailed curbs and gutters and elevations, we still have to do that latter step.
So the fencing may not be, look entirely like you're showing here. There could be some changes in it as of yet?
I expect that there would be changes once we look even more closely at the practicality of construction. I think the idea here suggests that this would be the general form of that fence, and it would draw its aesthetic from the idea of that switching yard. But the exact height, the exact rail spacing, all of that is still things that we would consider during the detailed design process.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Adam. At the committee meeting, you know, there was discussion about snow plowing. And then being so close to the street, the snow, if we have a heavy snow, you know, it couldn't, we wouldn't be able to clear the sidewalks there. And it was mentioned that maybe they could be in removable sections, you know, dropped down in the posts and taken out if that were the case. And as I look at it, the blue in there reminds me of fish, you know. The lakes and the fish, it's got the shape of a fish, and it's very pleasing, actually. You did present some costs to us, too, at the meeting. They're very preliminary, as I looked at them. Your job now is to take these preliminary ones and do a final design, and then come back to us. Is that correct?
Yeah. Where the process goes from now is this is essentially the end of the project that I've been commissioned to do at this point. I understand staff will be considering the sort of future of how this goes forward, looking at various funding sources, capital improvement process and whatever, at which time it was decided to, it might be decided to go forward to implementation of either portions of this, which is the likely case, that there'll be portions over time. Then at that point, we would do more detailed design work. And through that detailed design process, we would then keep an eye on the cost through various iterations of that. Again, much like you would do a roadway, there's always a preliminary cost, and then there may be some engineering estimates kind of partway along to see if you're keeping in line with where you want to be. And then there's certainly a final engineering estimate at the end. There won't be another cost estimate at this point until another project is released to do more detailed design work, and then we would do more cost estimates as that project, as that process progressed.
Okay. And then a couple of the comments. It was also mentioned at the meeting that during the holiday season, the fences could be lit with rope lighting or something, do LED lighting, which would really highlight them in the evening. And as far as the columns with the Wilmer sign on it, you could use LED lighting in there, too, that changes colors, you know. So they would, it attracts people more. It's more attractive. But that's it for my comments. Any more from the...
Okay. What steps do we take?
I've got it in the rest of the minutes here, but Mr. Dawkins had a comment.
Okay. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming. I like the columns very much. I'm working on the fence. The columns make a lot of sense, and what I mentioned at the Public Works meeting was that the First Street Bridge, you could actually call that the YFC entrance to our city. When you tie it to a building that a lot of people understand, then that's the YFC entrance. And on Third Street, that would be the Burlington Northern Gateway to downtown Wilmer. And of course, the West End, Genio started out on the west end of town, and it certainly might be referred to as the Genio entrance to downtown, or gateway to downtown Wilmer. So, but I like the columns very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Well, I'll continue with the minutes since there's no other discussion. Another comment, we might be able to sell those entrance signs to those places, too. You never know. They do it for stadiums. Otherwise, thank you for your report, Adam. Very thorough. The committee did discuss the design at length, and he presented a preliminary cost estimate to us, giving the committee a broad idea for funding. The issue of how fencing may affect the ingress, egress of business in the gateway was brought up, and it was noted these issues would be discussed in the final design phase of the project. After some discussion, a motion was made and seconded for the past, or for the, for the following. And I will introduce the motion that we approve the concept as presented by Mr. Arvidson and initiate plans for funding and final design.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the concept as presented and initiate plans for funding and final design. Is there any, are there any comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number five was, had to do with the Sperryville Lift Station easement. Our planning and services director presented a request to purchase an easement from Wanda Stallman in the amount of $2,875. The Sperryville Lift Station is scheduled to be replaced this summer, and the design includes relocating the lift station farther to the west with abandonment of the former structure. The amount of compensation is based on the assessed value plus some damages. Formal approval has been made by the Planning Commission and an easement drafted for the property owner. Again, after some discussion, this motion was made, seconded and passed to the following. And I will introduce a resolution to approve that easement in the amount of $2,875 and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the document.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the easement in the amount of $2,875 and authorize the mayor and city administrator to execute the document. Are there any questions or comments? Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
If there are no questions or comments, I would move to file these minutes.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee report for June 25, 2013. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Labor Relations Committee report for June 26, 2013. Councilman Amen.
The Labor Relations Committee met on June 26, 2013, this year, conference for months, the Offspring. Number one on the agenda, we called the meeting to order, and the second item was that we asked if there was any public comments, and there was nobody there for any public comments at that time. Mr. Dawkins referenced an article regarding meeting minutes and questioned whether minutes of closed sessions should be available. The attorney, Frank Madden, who's our legal counsel on labor matters, explained the exceptions with the open meeting law for closed sessions. And Councilmember DeBlick stated that the city otherwise has minutes appropriately approved by the city council and assigned by the mayor and the city clerk on the following or preceding council meeting night. So I think we are in compliance, and I think Mr. Dawkins was pleased to know that that was, that was accommodating. Item number three, we went into, we had closed session. There was a motion made and seconded to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statutes 13D.03 to discuss labor negotiation strategies. The motion carried, and we reopened the meeting at 5:35 PM, and it carried. Item number four was consideration of LALS employment contract. LALS, by the way, is the police union. Myself and Mr. Madden reviewed the proposed terms of the contract settlement with LALS. Mr. Madden noted that LALS had met earlier in the day and approved the attached contract terms, which were arrived at in a mediation session that was conducted on June 18th of this year. Motion was made and seconded to approve the settlement, contract settlement with LALS as outlined by Attorney Madden and attached. And the motion carried, and I would move that recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the contract settlement with LALS as outlined by Attorney Madden and find it attached. Is there any discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it appropriate, maybe, that the labor chair just might briefly go through some of the, what we agreed to in the contract with the LALS. If he would...
Sure. In 2013, settlement was 1.5 general wage increase. 2014 was a general wage increase of 2%. Also, there are some changes in insurance, which was something that we arbitrated at last year, and finally had a ruling on that. And currently, the policy is that fifty, any increase in insurance costs will be shared 50% by the employer or the city of Wilmer and them. So there's a shared joint cost in that. The formula calculation of 50% of the increase in the cost of the monthly premium for family coverage under the basis plan, which as was outlined below, is currently for 2012, it's $1,539 minus the total of the single premium currently for 2012, which is $549.
Thank you.
Those were the, those were the primary issues that were discussed. Also, there was an increase in the clothing allowance of $25 per month for the year 2013, and an increase of $25 for clothing allowance in 2014. We also increased the specialist pay, which would be like the people who work in the school system, to $25 more per month. The grievance procedure changed a little bit, just giving them another procedure to go through, through grievance process, through the city administrator and the department heads, and then back to the employee relations committee. Parenting Leave Act was revised due to the Family Medical Leave Act, FMLA. Currently, we have four months, and the current federal guidelines are three months. So we changed that to three months, and they were agreeing to that. Vacation changed a little bit, but nothing more than, as far as the accumulated time, it retains a minimum of 40 hours of vacation, but they have to maintain 40 hours of vacation on their, on their accumulated time that they can receive. They can cash out or cash in 40 hours of vacation one time per year maximum. And I think that hit on the majority of the things that were changed or revised.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion?
Oh, I just, Mr. Mayor, I might want to add that we also discussed briefly, I'm trying to remember the acronym for the insurance plan.
The Affordable Healthcare Act. There is a clause that was added for the healthcare, that the employer reserves the right to reopen the article for compliance with the Affordable Care Act.
Right, right. So we'll be, maybe talk with them later on that. And hopefully, it'll be cooperative.
Thank you.
And I would just offer one clarification. Councilmember Amen, the uniform allowance is increased by $25 per year, not per month.
I'm sorry.
But that's all.
I stand corrected.
Just a clarification.
Thank you for telling me that.
All in favor say aye. All in favor of the motion that is on the table, say aye.
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 Those opposed say nay. That motion carries.
Moving on, number, number five was old business. Mr. Christensen asked about electronic agendas, and Ms. Stevens responded that Councilmembers DeBlick and Mr. Johnson are going to be our guinea pigs, and they agreed to test a system for us. And it was hoped that it would begin with the second council meeting in July, so we look forward to seeing how that works out for you guys. Also, I asked if there had been a date set for the retreat, as a lot of you are anxiously waiting to get together. And Ms. Stevens, it can be contacted as soon to set up a time to determine what would be the best for everyone. I also asked about an epitaph policy, and we have one in place right now, and it's time that we review those occasionally, and that's what our future agenda items will be including. There is no further new business, and we will file a minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee report for June 26, 2013. Are there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Community Development Committee report for June 27, 2013. Councilman Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number one was public comment. There was no one there to speak. Item two was garbage and waste disposal. Due to the number of recent complaints regarding garbage storage and collection in the central business district, staff has researched a variety of other regional centers to find out how they handle garbage and waste. Megan DeSheppard, our city planner, reported that Wellington employs a neighborhood service officer that can write citations for garbage. Appeals are heard by a hearing officer. Brainerd has administrative citations, and they're issued to owners of properties where violations occur. They also use an administrative hearing officer to hear appeals. Hutchinson and Fairwall has ordinances that allow the city to abate the offense and assess costs against the property for those cases where it is a threat to health or safety. The question was asked, how can we enforce, have enforcement done easier and more successful? Staff stated that under the current ordinances, it is a challenge. As exterior storage violations are petty misdemeanors, the violations of the municipal code are misdemeanors. Stefan Deleski of West Central Printing said he believes the biggest problems are the frequency of collections and the size of containers. Animal and produce waste should be double-bagged and should be picked up daily according to the municipal code. He said that if collection frequency was increased, the size of the container should be reduced. And Stefan is here, and he has some photos, if you want to put them on the big screen. We can look.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, name's Stefan Deleski, live downtown, 103 Southwest Fifth Street. A lot of these pictures we've generated, the pictures I provided you also have the dates on them. Picture number one here is right across the street from the Diamond Vogel front entrance. The dumpster with graffiti on the front, I believe, is owned by the Los Primos Restaurant on Fourth Street. And the other dumpster there with the boxes sticking out belongs to the building there. I think it's 322 Fourth Street. It's in picture number two there. It's a pretty common occurrence. You see a bunch of garbage laying on the bottom there, food waste and stuff. That picture there, that's it. 10 pounds of rice. Somebody apparently tried to make it to the dumpster and didn't make it, and it blew all over the sidewalk. It got cleaned up. That was probably the grossest part of the story, how it got cleaned up and everything. But, you know, we can do without some of them. A lot of the conversations tonight are roofing our city greenscape and everything, yet we have these blights upon our, our city. You know, those things are right up against the sidewalks. They don't clean around them. You know, there's ordinances, we can probably write ordinances till they come out our ears, but I guess until somebody starts enforcing things. And what do you do in a situation like that where we have a parking lot? And what do you do in a situation like that where we have a parking lot that's probably shared by five different businesses, easements going through there? The parking lot where you see the white car in, I believe, is owned by the building there with the All-Star Realty sign on there. You know, it's referenced to Liberty Bar, which probably closed 25 years ago. Name that kind of sticks. Nothing else has been prominent or a reference, reference to it. There's apartments on the first floor, and the garbage gets brought out, and it's tossed up on top of the dumpsters. The frequency of pickup is kind of the conversation that we had there. They were cut off numerous times. It's pretty easy. The garbage guy comes in on Mondays, and he backs up, and he looks at his book, and then all of a sudden, he gets back in the truck and drives away. So, we figure either he's cut off, or he just doesn't want to, you know, pull that dumpster up close enough to the truck to tip it. They back up right onto the curb and get right up close to it usually, pull them out and, and tip the dumpsters and empty them out. That's that building, I guess. Next one was that garbage. That is a different day. That one is February 17th. That top one was February 17th also. This was December 11th. They had a pile of garbage out in front, the snow around it. Nobody attempts to really do much of a cleaning job on there, and the snow piles up. Nobody gets around to doing anything there. This is a week later, December 18th. The one blue one has been tipped, but the other one now hasn't. So, it's kind of a hodgepodge of who's paying their bills and who's not. You know, we kind of got around to the comment, you know, if that, if you get a skip service, maybe the garbage service needs to take those things out of there and then bring them back. We run into some problems behind our building, and that happens to be across from Peterson Shoes. That got cleaned up pretty quick. We brought it to the owner's attentions, and they went out and dug it out, had quite a time. But that's behind our building, the West Central Printing Building sharing the lot between the county building. And for a while, I've got it all documented at work. It was every 90 days, they were cut off. They didn't pay their bill. I don't know if they really understood the billing process and how it worked, but it's, it's gotten better since the garbage service has pretty much imposed a pretty significant restart fee. If you get cut off, it's going to cost you quite a bit of money to get restarted. But, what's to say that you get cut off and you don't have the money and you decide, you know, there's a lot of things. You can put off a dentist for quite a while. You can put off a doctor for quite a while. You put this off, and a lot of people know it in a hurry. The smell is nauseating. I don't, I don't have pictures of our deck, but we built an addition, put a nice deck up there, and like to go out there and sit and enjoy ourselves a supper. These northeast winds the last few nights is nauseating. You don't want to sit out there and smell that. So, we go back inside. You know, it's so much for enjoying our downtown and our environment. Last year, the blue dumpster with the garbage sticking out of it like that. Now, when they first moved in there, we knew this was happening. We knew it was coming. It was behind the city office building. And I talked to the sanitation service, and I said, I don't want them back there. I knew whose property it was, but nobody else seemed to know whose property it was. So, it, it went around for quite a while till they realized they owned the property, decided to put their dumpsters back there. And the Department of Ag came over and asked us, if they put their dumpsters back there, they must double-bag the food and produce waste, and then put them in there so it eliminates flies, waters, bloods, things like that. That lasted for a couple of months. Then after that, we started to notice the stench and everything. They got cut off after 90 days, and it piled up, and the smell started. But that's a pretty common occurrence usually out there. That is the blood trail, June 16th. We had, it was a Friday night. We had company over. We're going to cook out on the deck and relax, and they hauled their dumpsters from their back door out to the far corner. The dumpster was next to the other one, but the smell was so bad, I pushed it off the edge of the lot way out to the end, right by the sidewalk. So, they drug their 35-gallon garbage can clear across the parking lot, and you could see the trail. We stood up there and watched them. I knew it was going to happen, and I, I mentioned it to other people. I said, well, let's just watch and see what happens. And they took and hauled it out there, tipped the dumpster up, let it drain for the time it takes to smoke a cigarette, and then left the door open on the top and walked away. And I figured they're going to come back. And that was 8:30. It never did come back. That dumpster stat opened for a week and a half. I just watched it to see what would take, how long it would take. And it's, I haven't even went and looked in the thing. It smells enough. I was going to bring a jar, kind of swoop it down in there and close the jar up and see if anybody wanted to smell it, but I don't think you'd appreciate the, you couldn't see it, so you can't really appreciate it. Blood trail, I don't know. It, Department of Health Hazard, something? We don't know. This happens to be the dumpster behind the Lakeland Hotel Building. The guys were hauling trash down there. That's why the tops were open usually. This one here right now is managed by Don Pierce, who is handling the rental out of the Bondi Building, where Daily Grind used to be. He is paying for the garbage service over there. The Lakeland Hotel gets to bring their garbage down, the restaurant stuff, put it in there, but they need a place to put their garbage. So, he's paying for this dumpster to be there, and they were actively hauling it down. When I took the picture, I talked to the guys, and they slammed the lids down and left within a couple of minutes. But they've got, you know, placed garbage and trash cans only, and they have problems. People just kind of get up to that and chuck it over. So, the, the signs don't seem to help. Same picture, just a couple of feet farther back. Tom and Don do keep that quite clean in there for the most part. You know, you can only be on it so much. That's the one behind the Havics Building between 414 Becker and there now. They used to have a trailer in there, and they had a trailer with a cover, and they'd pull that cover over, haul it out to the dump, empty it, come back, wash it out, park the trailer back in there. They could manage it a lot quicker. He hires people to haul out, haul it out there and dump it. But apparently, the ordinance states is fly tight and water tight. I'd be a millionaire if I could figure that one out. But they had to go back to a dumpster, and now they've got, and I was, I was told that there was a mattress and everything and a bunch of other stuff laying there. And I got over there right away in the morning, and it got cleaned up somehow. So, I don't know what happened to it between Friday night and Saturday about 10 o'clock. But it's kept pretty clean. They usually bleach that alley to keep it awfully clean, and that's just the oil spots and the residue. If you ever followed a garbage truck around town, when they back up, they're dripping stuff out of these dumpsters. They're far from water tight. And that probably gets to be half of our problem downtown is whatever's put in them. If it rains, all the rainwater gets in there, and it mixes with everything. If you're tipping once a week, you're going to accumulate some rain if we're getting these one- and two-inch rains. That happens to be a close-up of that dumpster. It was piling up pretty good. And the ordinance says these things are supposed to be, you provide enough dumpster or tip it so that that doesn't happen. And, you know, at the Public Works Meeting or the Community Development Meeting, I asked, what did they do 50 years ago before we had two-year dumpsters downtown? I've only been here 35 years, and I think in the 35 years I've been here, the two-yard dumpsters have started showing up. When I first moved here, we had the old steel garbage cans with a lid that went on pretty tight. Nowadays, everybody has a good neighbor cart. If it sits outside, the wind blows that way. Or they have two-yard dumpsters, and those things open and close like a screen door on the wind, and then things bang and slam when the wind blows. I did find one. That happened to be right across from Diamond Vogel. In the wintertime, the people would walk up, the snow on top, so they'd just chuck the bags up there. They weren't going to walk back there and clean the snow off, put their garbage in a receptacle or anything. The three across the back way up there, those belong to the Elks, and they are chained down. So, they do go out there and clean theirs off. But these here containers, I believe, come from another building, the Command Center. So, there's a lot of dumpsters placed on property not owned by the landlord in downtown. So, there's some business and rental. This is some of the cleaner ones. This happens to be the Behe Store downtown. He was having a lot of problems, came over to us and said, what do I do? I'm getting people that are coming over and putting their garbage. He was looking at it and seeing it obviously did not belong to him or his tenants. I said, we'll put a chain on it. Call, uh, West Central Sanitation, which this one happens to be the other service now. He's switched. But they put a chain on there to lock theirs down. So, his tenants have a key. They come down, they open it up, they put their garbage in there, and it stays pretty darn clean. They don't have any problems with theirs filling over. That's Frida's. He has two of those good neighbor carts. That's all he has back there to run Frida's Cafe. So, they're obviously tipped a lot more often than once a week with all the food wastes and everything there. And I don't hear anybody complaining about Frida's. This one here belongs to the Fat Freddy's, corner of 3rd Street and Litchfield Avenue. He's got a key lock system on there. That bar flips up, keeps anybody from opening it and throwing things not owned by his tenants or anything in there. And the one right behind it is the grocery store on 3rd Street also. So, theirs is unsecured. I walked over, took a look at it. It was three-quarters full this morning, the lid wide open, nothing to stop birds, animals, or anything from getting in there and creating a mess, or rain coming down in there. And they do sell meat products and produce over there too. But it didn't stink so bad that you couldn't get next to it, take a quick look in there. And these are some of our cleaner ones. I drove down 1st Street this morning. This here is Applebee's. Everybody that seems to be a franchise, with the exception of Subway, has an enclosure to keep all their stuff in. That's Arby's, a little bit rugged, but sitting way back in the trees. Perkins Restaurant, the south end of town, everything's contained. That's it. It seems like everybody that is, that answers to somebody else has an awfully clean system. But those that leave these two-yard dumpsters sitting out has gotten to be a problem. That's kind of some of the notes. You know, I was wondering, you know, what happened, you know, over these years? And we've had, you know, a number of issues. You know, it was the last time I was here was in August of 2009. We were kind of addressing some of the same issues, you know, more so the public containers downtown, but we did have these things too. But it's really come to a head with the smells. The, you know, the garbage is blowing out and stuff. I'm surprised the county hasn't said anything. All the people at Park 25 feet away from those things. And it's, they happen to be out our front door, you know, Diamond Vogel's out of his back door. You know, it's out my back door. We're the ones seeing it. I guess if there's other people in town, some of them come over and say things, but this is kind of where it's at now.
All right. Thanks, Stefan. Also at the meeting was Roger Olson from Diamond Vogel Paints. He said that garbage piles up across the street and in the alley and in the lot behind the store. He has been corresponding with their corporate office to discuss relocating the store. The big issue seems to be the smell during the summer months and the fact that it piles up and blows around in the winter. Councilman Johnson suggested that the community service officer do downtown parking enforcement and also enforce the city's garbage ordinances. He suggested that a task force be created to review and revise the ordinance and enforcement procedures. Councilman Dacken said the city needs to get some results so the downtown is cleaner and the downtown plan can be implemented. It was suggested that the following topics be considered by a task force. Container size, screening of containers, bagging of waste, frequency of pickup, CSO enforcement, and also maybe to get the county to recycle in downtown since there are a lot of residential apartments. There was a motion made by Councilman de Bleek, seconded by Johnson, and passed for the following, that Mayor Yanish appoint a task force to study the garbage issue and offer recommendations for improved storage and collection. And I'll introduce that.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded that Mayor Yanish appoint a task force to study the garbage issue and offer recommendations for improved storage and collections. Is there any discussion?
I think it should be done soon.
Thank you. I will make this promise to this council that I will appoint the task force, and we will study what is going on downtown and, and correct the issue. Thank you.
Mayor Yanish?
Yes.
Make a suggestion as well, too, that after you've finished with the downtown, maybe we should look community-wide as well, because we see a lot of dumpsters sitting around the community on the street curb, tipped over, garbage piled on the curb a week, you know, two, three days after pickup. So, maybe you could look at.
Did you have in mind having the same task force?
Would be the same task force, but work on the downtown first and move.
Thank you.
Community-wide.
And that's what we will do.
Councilmember?
Just curious if there's other entities that should be involved when you have restaurants or grocery stores, those types of things. I know they have to follow other regulations. Is there someone else we should be involving besides just the city?
I would say apartments. I did see two this morning. Sorry?
I would probably look at apartments. You know, at that meeting, we heard about complaints from various places, but in my travels this morning, I stopped at one spot, take a picture, and one apartment, and I'm not sure if it's a 36-unit apartment, has three good neighbor carts. One next door to it, 36 units, has a two-yard container that was overflowing. So, those are probably issues, and who knows what's going to come up. I mean, we just started out watching the cans that were nearby us, and, you know, as complaints would surface, I'm sure that they could be addressed and something comes up.
You mentioned double-bagging and that type of thing. If they aren't doing that, is that something that can be reported to whoever they get their license from, or is that not something that's enforceable either?
I, I don't really know what's going on there. I just know that the Department of Agriculture inspects people that sell meat. That apparently is the only site that they, they took a look at. I don't think they look at the produce section. At least, that's the appearance, because I did call Frank, or what's his name? Frank Kavanaugh from Benson. And the last interaction I had with him is when the state shut down, and I called him up, and I said, you know, we've had a serious problem back there. And he goes, well, state started back up this morning, and I couldn't take my vacation then, and I'm doing it now. I'm gone for another two weeks. So, I kind of gave up on, on them. You know, it's, I think that's something that needs really to be addressed at home. You know, that you can't be calling the state inspector to run over and look at garbage cans every time somebody decides they're going to cheat the system for a while. It's, it's a cost doing business. And if there's a state ordinance or anything, but it was just one of the issues he brought to us and said, in order to try and reduce the odors, leakages, and smells, that their bags are double-bagged. And if, if they're throwing away many, many pounds of animal waste, it really should be double-bagged, I guess, to, or have a much tighter container. You know, when they have oils and stuff, they have to dump them in some pretty good-sized containers, so.
Maybe that's something the task force could check out in addition, if there's any other help out there.
I would assume so.
We will have a task force to check this out. If we're going to spend the money on the entrances into downtown, we have to have something for the people that are entering downtown to look at and to, that's desirable.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman.
I'd like to offer just a suggestion or a thought. I have had a couple of people that have called me, and again, I said I'd wait for the appropriate time to bring it up, and it was regarding recycling, recycling of a mandatory recycling program in the city of Wilmer. And I know that I served on the committee many, many years ago on a recycling board back in the early 80s, and Stacy from Flatable was the chairman of that. And we did discuss recycling, and we now have those green containers that a lot of people use. When you, in your conversation, Steve, you were talking about the tenants. Well, tenants can buy things, a lot of extra cardboard, and a lot of things for purchasing in their apartment, and then it gets thrown out, and it's, like you said, blown over. If we had a recycling, a more active or mandatory recycling issue or recycling ordinance in the community, we'd have to have that really, really coordinated with the local merchants or locals, people in town provider garbage service. That's going to take some coordination. But I, I think progressively, as our community grows, and we're, we're 20,000 people, I think, I think it's time to maybe look at that a little more seriously too. And if that committee could research that and talk about it, I think that would be a good time.
Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item comes up every so many years, and you bring it here most of the time. You know, we, as consumers, we buy more stuff today. We throw more stuff away. Recycling is an answer, however, you're going to have to have another container out there for them to put the recycling in, because they're not going to, a lot of these people don't have vehicles downtown, and so they can't walk at all to the recycling center. And I've said this many times, and I believe it to be true. We, in Wilmer, residents, the citizens, are our own worst critic, and that's why we have such fine-looking yards as you drive around Wilmer, and that's why we're proud of our businesses, and that's why you're here. And we need to continue to be our own worst critic so that we can clean this up. I'm not sure what the answer is, but it isn't a garbage problem. It's a people problem. It's people that will put up with garbage in their backyard, and then they don't have any feelings for the neighbor. They just, this is my garbage, I'm going to throw it out there. Somehow, that needs to be addressed. It's, it's a people problem, and it isn't the landlord's problem. I mean, he can't make sure that there's no odor. it isn't the landlord's problem. I mean, he can't make sure that there's no odor coming from the dumpster that's outside of his apartment building. He can't be there and make sure that it isn't overfilled. These people that are living downtown and doing this need to address it. And this task force, I'm sure, will do that. But it's a people problem. We need to get these people that are doing this to realize you're harming the neighbor. You know, we can write them misdemeanors, their petty misdemeanors, all day long, and it's not going to do any good unless we really raise the fine up. You know, $500 the first time. Maybe they'll get the answer. You know, maybe they'll respond to it. But it's up... I would suggest the task force do that. I don't know how else you're going to do it. Because the police will just be over there writing ticket after ticket after ticket, and they ignore it. The service goes away, the service comes back. So I would ask the task force to consider really high fines for it. It'll probably take care of the problem. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we obviously need to fix this. We have a wonderful downtown plan. We're talking about spending a lot of money on gateways to our downtown. And then we have a long-term business person that indicates they may be looking for another location for their business, you know? That's a pretty significant comment, I would say. And it speaks to something that Councilmember Christensen just spoke to, that we need to fix this, and we need to fix it right.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have an idea how many people you want on this?
I would say three or four is what I'm thinking.
Three or four?
Three or four.
I think you might need to have a few more than that.
You think so?
Business owners, downtown residents, property owners, sanitation representatives from each company.
Any further discussion?
There may be some people who want to volunteer to, from both, I mean, to work together on that. Because I think you've illustrated there's some that are doing a good job and some that it's good sometimes and not others. So I would hope that you'd get a good...
I think maybe you're right. You know...
I think that, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I mean, I think the Councilman Fagerly raised some, you know, good suggestions about how to put the task force together. I think you can determine that going forward. I think, you know, you first need to kind of agree to form it, but you don't have to actually form it this evening.
Thank you.
All right.
Any further questions or comments? Then we need to vote on the, that I appoint a task force to study the garbage issue and other recommendations for improved storage and collection.
Just a motion.
Do we have a motion on that?
Yes.
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 We do want a second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item three, residential zoning enforcement. Brief analysis of zoning enforcement procedures was presented and reviewed by the committee. There's an attachment here. Staff noted that it was a difficult process and that it took a lot of time to get compliance with some properties. Council acknowledged that there were a number of areas of the community where these violations seemed to be more prevalent. Staff said that a meeting was to be held the next day, which would have been Friday, with the city administrator, police chief, and city attorney to discuss the enforcement process for most neighborhood zoning violations. We decided to wait until tonight to get that update. So Bruce, you want to tell us what happened?
City Administrator, Police Chief, and I met with City Attorney Tom Anderson last Friday afternoon. Of primary concern in our discussion was the length of time it takes to get things through the legal process, and then the fact that because they're charged as petty misdemeanors, there's really no real success in gaining compliance. The courts will issue a small fine, but they do not require compliance or that the property be cleaned up as part of the order. So it's a difficult situation to deal with. We talked about a variety of options for making improvements to the process. And staff is going to review our rental ordinance for changes because we think that's one area where we can have a little more influence dealing with landlords and property owners as opposed to the tenants. And then we'll also take a look at our process for citing properties that are owner-occupied, making sure that we stay on top of the court process. And typically, it's from the time we would have the property ticketed until it gets through the courts, and there would be the judgment issued and the fine due would be 30 days. And if we're not seeing compliance in 30 days, the city attorney has asked us to have the property re-ticketed, at which point it can go to court as a misdemeanor for a repeat violation. So it's going to take a little more watching on the part of staff. We do have a good tracking system in place. We know when the orders are written. We know when tickets are issued. But I think we have to ask for the public's patience to know that this can frequently be a 45-day time period. And if there's nothing there that's wet garbage or protrusible, we're going to work through that whole system. We don't have any choice. It's due process. That's how long it takes to play the system out. An example of one that we were able to kind of short-stop was over at 609 Second Street Southeast. That property is cleaned up now. The wet garbage has been removed by city staff. The furniture has been taken out of the yard and neatly stacked by the garage or in the garage. And I'm guessing we'll get over there and mow the lawn one of these next days as well. Because the owners have fled, and we don't have any way of tracking them down, this will be costs that come down as mowing costs, and we'll just charge everything off. And it'll come back to the council later this year as an assessment, during an assessment hearing. And it'll be on next year's taxes. That's not an easy process either. But in this particular case, because they had mounds of wet garbage up by the building, we just flat-out couldn't afford to wait any longer, and the Public Works crew picked it up and disposed of it. The garbage companies won't pick it up unless it's in a can. So.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. Any questions to Bruce? Anybody? Audrey?
Mr. Peterson, it's really just on a complaint basis right now. We don't have anybody out looking for these properties. It's when people call and complain. Is that correct?
Not necessarily. When our inspection and zoning staff are out in the field following up on other violations or on other actions, and they note a property, they will take a note, they will issue a citation at that time. They will write a high-visibility notice and leave with the property. And then they come back and mail a copy so that the owners and the tenants are notified of the violation. If it is a rental property, if it's an owner-occupied property, it just goes to the owner. But we don't always wait for phone calls or emails. If it's seen out in the field, it'll be addressed.
All right. Thank you.
Item number four was the Rural Tire Building. Staff was asked about the status of the Rural Tire Building. The response was that Habitat for Humanity had decided that they were not interested in purchasing or acquiring any of the property. They seemed to be content to use the one building at the south end of the property. The committee discussed the various possible outcomes if the city chooses not to accept the property as a gift. Most likely, option would be to declare it as an unsafe building and order its removal. In that case, the city would probably end up removing the building and assessing it against the property owner or placing a lien on the property. It was suggested that it might be in the city's best interest to pursue the property as a gift. Staff told the committee the owners of the property seemed to withdraw their other, their offer to pay the delinquent property taxes. It was a consensus of the committee that the staff pursue the acquisition of the property as a gift and that the delinquent tax matter be negotiated. Staff said they would try to negotiate an agreement to, in principle, and bring a proposal back to the committee for review and consideration. Also, we discussed the new air ambulance. Can you just talk about that for a minute?
Mayor Yanish, Councilmember Fagerly, Lifelink III, as you'll see in the paper today, has decided to move their air ambulance operation to the Wilmer Municipal Airport. And they will, at least in the short term, be leasing hangar space and be having a portable living structure out there for their crews. Ideally, they wish to have more permanent quarters for the crew within a hangar building. And I know that they are in discussions with at least two local developers who would construct space for them and lease them the space back. And we've had conversations with the developers and have worked with them to find an appropriate location on the main ramp at the airport so that they can locate this business. It'd be great for the city of Wilmer to have this business there. Unfortunately, they do generate a lot of activity because they're very active flying in emergency situations. But it's exactly the kind of activity we want in our airport, so we're really excited to have them here.
Thank you. Thank you. There was no further business. We adjourned at 6:20. So if there's no questions, I move to file.
Second. A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee Report for June 27 of 2013. Is there any discussion?
Councilman Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question on Lifelink III. Do we have to do any sort of coordinating with the FAA now that they're going to be, there'll be increased activity at our airport? Do we have to notify the FAA of that, or how is that handled?
We have no requirement for notifying the FAA. Though we have been in contact with them regarding the operations at the airport. Because we do not have an established heliport, it is required that the helicopters taxi to the runway and take off from the runway so that they are in the approved flight pattern. And that's very common for this type of ambulance service. So we'll just continue to work with them to make sure that all the FAA regulations are met. They've got a long and good history of operating these services. So I don't think we're going to have any issues with the FAA and their operations on our side.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. A consideration of the one-day, one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license. Wilmer Fraternal Order of the Eagles. Given, would you like to describe that for us?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council, you have before you an application for a temporary on-sale liquor license for the Eagles Club to hold a picnic for its members and family in their parking lot. Parking lots are not part of their on-sale premise permit. And so being club, they are authorized by the state to continue an event like that. And they have done this for about three years. So it's staff's recommendation that we approve the state one-to-four-day permit for the Eagles.
I'll still move, Mr. Mayor. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consideration of a one-to-four-day temporary on-sale liquor license for the Eagles. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Is there any old business to talk about today? About new business? Let's talk about the announcement of the council meeting committee dates. Councilman Armman.
No labor.
No labor. Councilman Christians?
Public Works, Public Safety, Tuesday, 4:45, July 9.
4:45. Who's taking Mr. Anderson's place for finance?
Finance committee will meet on July 8, Monday, at 4:45.
July 8 at 4:45.
That's correct.
And Councilman Fagerly?
No meeting.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion has been made and seconded. We are adjourned.